Good evening and welcome to the June 24th, 2025 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and would like to talk to council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters germane to City Council. We have a three-minute light system. After stating your name and address, you'll see a green light appear. After two minutes, you will see a yellow light. After three minutes, you will see a red light. At that time, please take your seat. Written remarks may be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. At this time, please silence your phone. Prior to beginning the business portion of this meeting, Apostle Dr. Christopher Spels, my friend with Harvard Church, will provide invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilwoman Vic will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is our practice to stand for the invocation and pledge. Those who also wish to stand are welcome to do so. Thank you.
Let us pray. Father, what can we say again but thank you? Thank you for another opportunity to come together into reason under your wisdom. God, we ask that, God, that you would just bless our city. Bless our great mayor, our vice, our council, women and men today that have gathered to hear the hearts of the people. You said in your word if my people who are called by my name would humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their ways, you would hear from heaven, you will heal our land. We ask that your hand be upon us, that you continue to encourage and empower all of those who work tirelessly behind the scenes to cause the city to work and function in excellence, from the firemen, the policemen, educators, teachers, civic leaders, everyone, pastors. We thank you, God. It's an honor to serve. And tonight, as the hearts of the people are rendered into the leadership, we pray that your will is done. Everyone has their set, God, that they pray. I pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Can you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have the city council join me at the podium, please. So, obviously, we're all here to a special recognition for our friend, Dr. Woodbury. He's been on council for such a long time. We have a nice framed resolution, and I'm not going to read all of it. I'll speak from the heart, but Pat, you know how we feel about you. We all know how you felt when you voted. You would let us know. But we do miss you, and you always have my cell phone. So I'm going to read a little bit, Pat, if that's okay. Whereas, the council of the City of Newport News, Virginia wishes to honor and recognize our friend, Dr. Woodbury, for sixteen years of service as a member of the Newport News City Council. And whereas, from July of 2008... That's high school for me.
Were you behaving?
I was behaving myself, 2008. Through December of 2024, Dr. Woodbury served the citizens of the City of Newport News as representative of the Central District. And whereas born in Southampton County, Virginia, she's been a longtime resident of Newport News, receiving a Bachelor of Science degree in music education from Longwood, 1957, a Master of Education from the College of William &amp; Mary, 1982, and her doctorate education from the College of William &amp; Mary as well. Dr. Woodbury has served as a passionate, passionate advocate and leader for the citizens of her district and the citizens of the entire city, striving to better the entire Newport News community while ensuring that everyone's voices were heard. A little bit, I'm just going to skip ahead. Whereas Pat has made many contributions to the city, the Virginia Peninsula, and the entire Hampton Roads region, this council wishes to recognize. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Newport News, that we hereby recognize Dr. Patricia P. Woodbury for her sixteen years of service as a member of the Newport News City Council, that we, as a group, express deep gratitude and heartfelt appreciation, Dr. Woodbury, for her many contributions to the city, the peninsula, and the entire Hampton Roads region. That a copy of this resolution be spread upon the records of this body, and that a copy be delivered, Dr. Woodbury, as a token of our deep respect and warm appreciation of this council and all citizens of Newport News. So, at this time, I just speak from the heart. When I was going to run for mayor, someone said, "Have you talked to Pat?" And I said, "Well, I don't think she's going to meet with me." And sure enough, I sent her an email. It was very formal, and we went to City Center and had a meeting. And she said, "I'm not going to support you right now, but I think you're very smart and you'll do a good job for our city one day." And so, I just want to say, Pat... That is, that's the Simpson version, by the way. I just, I want, actually, I want everyone on council to say what they think about Pat. But I just want to say, we miss you, we love you, and we're so glad to do this for you. And then we'll start left to right. How about that?
Okay. I will go next. It's already been said, but Pat, you know, what I love about you the most is your steadfastness. You are rocking what you believe in, and I will always respect that from anybody. I wish more people were like that, so that way you are not confused by them. You know where they stand. And so, it has been an honor to get to know you more. I've known you since I was in college. So, that was a long time ago. So, I appreciate you, Pat, and I look forward to seeing you out in the community.
Yes, real quick, this is my buddy right here. When I came on, kind of took me under wings, so to speak, and you learn so much about this work that we do. And I always appreciate it, how you will share, how honest you always are. And I can't thank you enough for still taking my phone calls. And also, if we still work together on the HRT board, how you continue to share your knowledge and wisdom with me. So, thank you.
Pat and I have always been the best of friends on council and have always agreed on everything. Yeah, but all series is it. Pat, you know, we haven't always seen eye to eye on topics...
I was calling you.
I know. So, but anyways, what I've always respected and appreciated was your dedication to your constituents in the district and throughout the city, and how willing you've always been to listen. And like I said, we not always, always agreed, but we have not become disagreeable. So, I love you to death. I appreciate all you years of service and wish you many, many more years of happiness. Thank you.
Well, Pat, I've known her since I was a child. Before I knew Pat, I was working on her campaign, passing on her literature throughout the neighborhood. So, I'm always admired her, even when she was on the school board. She was an active member. She always made sure students were first. Also made sure that our kids had the best education possible at Newport News. And then knowing her as city council, she was always about community first. So, Pat, I miss you. I even begged her, "Pat, please, run again, run again." She said, "No, I did my time." So, she's been very an advocate for Newport News and...
But they still listen to you.
Oh, we got... It's still Pat's world, man. She's still one of the most powerful women in Newport News. But we appreciate her for your time serving Newport News and continue to great work off council.
Absolutely.
Love you.
Actually, Pat, from high school, we served a youth service mission back in the 90s. And after I came back from college, I also got involved in the city, and she was always there and was always willing to speak and talk. And for those two years, we served as counterparts in Central. Pat was willing to take my call. I remember when we first got elected, we went out to Second Street, we had a nice long conversation, we had up to the chat. And I really do appreciate you helping bring me on the city council. And anytime you need to call about citizens in the district, I know you will call me. And then you get out there and advocate because you really did a great service to the community for sixteen years of city council and then also the school board. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Well...
Hell.
I didn't know this lady when we ran for council, but in 2008, we, you know, sought each other out. Some people in the community made me think she was the devil and the... By the time we won, I was scared of Pat. But fast forward to our meetings, to our communication, but particularly what I love about this lady is that she's going to look out for the entire Newport News, whether it's issues on housing, education, whatever, workforce development, HRBT, you were our biggest advocate on that board. But it has been so great working with you over the years. And not only working with you to come to the meetings, but we really got a chance to get some things done in Newport News. And so, we did all of that, but the best thing nobody can outdo Pat and I on is dancing. Love you, Pat. I'm thankful, thank you for all the years.
Absolutely. The mayor?
City manager?
I would like to say that when we first became acquainted with each other, I was an assistant city manager, and it was at the same time that you came on council. And the one thing that I've always, I've always appreciated about you is your sincere interest in local government, whether it was HRT or the Virginia Municipal League. I knew you were always active in the municipal league. It was not only governance, but it was what you could do to make a difference in the city of Newport News. And that was very inspiring to me. And I enjoyed working with you as a city manager, and you certainly carried that same commitment and sincerity all the way through until your departure from council. I wish you all the best in the world. Thank you.
We're going to take a moment of privilege and let Pat talk to the crowd, and then we'll do a photo as a group.
Oh, you want a forty-five-minute speech? Ha, ha, ha. You know, I, as a five-year-old, fed my grandfather every night, his dinner. He was fed, ridden. And as a five-year-old, he said to me, "Now, I want you to become a doctor." Well, I think what he meant was he really wanted me to come on MD, but I did get my doctorate for him because I'd remembered that from the time I was five years old. And it has always been my pleasure to do something good for somebody else. And my sixteen years here allowed me to do that. And I appreciate it more than you will ever know, being able to reach out to the community. And those calls I got were wonderful. I loved getting every one of them, and I acted on all of them. And I appreciate... I'm not going to cry. I swear to you, I'm not. But I do appreciate so much the opportunity I had to do for other people while I was on council. And I'm still getting calls, so don't hesitate to call me. And I do appreciate so much your being here tonight and being supportive of what I did. So, thank you.
Wait for Mabel and Bob to get down. I'm going to try to move this.
Oh, there were some extras. Yes. Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do we have the permission to go to the...
You're good, ma'am. So, actually, you guys are good, ma'am. While Dr. Woodbury exits, we're going to have the school board chair actually come up right now. So, perfect timing. Thank you, Pat. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Y'all be blessed.
Take your time. We got full...
Well, the one thing I was going to say is that the mayor and I have something in common. When I went to go meet with Pat, she said the exact same thing to me.
She was nice about it, though.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm not going to support you.
But she gave wonderful advice on being on the school board, so I'm very thankful for that. Well, council, I try to come and see you once a year, this time of the year especially, because I want to thank you. I want to thank you for all that you do for the city. I want to thank you for all you do for schools. So, I have prepared remarks so that you can have them for the record later. So, I'll just read from those. So, on behalf of the school board and the students, staff, and families of Newport News Public Schools, I thank you for your unwavering support and partnership. It is a joy to see you all involved in what goes on in our buildings with our students and with our teachers. You've been spotted at sporting events, receiving lines to celebrate our staff, sitting with children, sharing a book, and sharing a moment. You give of yourselves, and it is so incredibly noted and appreciated. We also want to extend our sincere appreciation for Alan Archer's ongoing collaboration, thoughtful partnership, and unwavering support for Newport News Public Schools. You're off to a wonderful start. Your steadfast commitment to the success of our students and staff has been both impactful and inspiring. Superintendent Mitchell says, and I quote, "His leadership as city manager reflects a deep understanding of the vital connection between strong schools and a thriving community. I am especially grateful for your role as a thoughtful partner, always willing to listen, offer insights, and work collaboratively to ensure the needs of our young people remain a shared priority," end quote. Our board truly appreciates your action to fully fund our budget for the 2025-2026 school year. Thank you for that support. Looking forward, we will be able to continue funding all of our current initiatives and departments. Employees will also receive a 3% salary increase, and the starting pay for a new teacher with a bachelor's degree will increase from 55.1 to 56 a year. This month marks the official close of the 2024-2025 school year, a year filled with great things happening in our schools. Earlier this month, more than 1,600 students graduated from Newport News Public Schools, and some of you attended ceremonies with the school board as we celebrated our students' achievements. The class of 2025 earned more than $85 million in scholarships and awards, and received approximately 2,400 college, university, and military institution acceptance offers. We have graduates going on to Princeton and Stanford in the fall, as well as many other prestigious institutions of higher education, those right here in Virginia, those who are entering the military, and many entering the workforce right here in Newport News. Almost half of the graduating class graduated with honors, maintaining a grade point average of 3.0 or higher. I'm going to read that again. Almost half the class graduated with honors by maintaining a graduate, a grade point average of 3.0 or higher. And as you know, our graduation rate is higher than the state's average at 93%. And there's a lot more good news, and I will share a little bit of that, but it will be in your meeting records. Five NNP schools recognized as exemplary schools. Deer Park Elementary School earned a highest achievement award. Haydenwood Elementary School, Catherine Johnson Elementary, Huntington Middle, and Woodside High earned continuous improvement awards through the Virginia Board of Education Exemplar School Recognition Program. Five NNP teachers became National Board certified, which is the highest credential in the teaching profession. Catherine Johnson Elementary School was honored with the prestigious Christine Darden STEM Community Partnership Award. And General Stanford Elementary School was recognized with the Purple Star Second Award for the Virginia Department of Education for its military-friendly schools. Going to jump down to a little bit on our sports. Woodside. Woodside.
Greatest high school known to man.
I was waiting for it. I have to agree. My daughter graduated from Woodside. Woodside High School's boys indoor track team won the 2025 Virginia High School League Class V State Championship. Also in Class V, Woodside DJ Collins earned the state championship in both indoor and outdoor track and field, boys triple jump. Woodside's Kida Tibbs won the Creative Writing State Champion in the poetry category, and Minchfield's Victoria Epps won the girls tennis single state champion. Heritage High School's girls indoor track four-by-two-hundred-meter relay team of Tyla Clark, and we need to know these names. Tyla Clark, Gianni Darden, Jalea Beasley, and Ms. Brown, they don't have the full name here, won the Class III State Champion. These are just a few of the many accomplishments of our students and staff earned this year, and we need to thank you for your ongoing support. Please continue to show up and show out because we need you. It's not an individual effort. It has been my extreme joy to be the chair of the board for the past two and a half years. Mayor Jones, you rock, and we thank you. And you guys have a great summer. We'll see you in the fall.
Thank you. But before you go, ma'am, I just, I think the been mayor for two and a half years, so we've been together for the entire time. And well, I'm never going to forget the first time we had dinner at Al Fresco and negotiated the budget over some ravioli. But just thank you for all that you've done. You have been a friend, a mentor, someone that I could confide in, and no one can ever doubt how much you care about these kids. And so, we appreciate you. I will miss you as the official chair of the board, but just you're always in my heart. So, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you so much. You guys take care.
Thank you, ma'am. Ready? Okay, public hearings. We're going to go back to now our regularly scheduled council meeting. So, if you need to leave, no worries. Public hearings, page four, item E1, request adoption ordinance to amend ordinance number 7985, Tac 24, as previously amended by ordinance number 8007, Tac 24, and resolution 13829, Tac 25, to re-adopt the budget and appropriated funds to operate the City of Newport News for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025. At this time, I see that we do not have any speakers. Motion to close public hearing.
So, moved.
Moved and seconded. At this time, any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, and we're going to vote electronically, city council. So, at this time, please open the vote.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Okay, so mine is down, so we're going to... Mine has to go back to voice. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussions? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Page 10, item E2, request adoption ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a restriction agreement by and between the Economic Development Authority, the City of Newport News, and the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for 701 Jefferson Avenue. At this time, I see we do not have any speakers. Motion to close the public hearing.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. At this time, any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you, page 21, item three, request adoption ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate and implement a port host communities fund grant for 701 Jefferson Avenue. At this time, we have no speakers. Motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Move it up.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman, Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you, item E4, request to approve resolution authorizing the lease of the city-owned seafood industrial park, parcel one, to the Economic Development Authority of the City of Newport News. I see we have no speakers. Motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you, item E5, request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to make offers to acquire by voluntary sell or condemnation portions of property for the Mercury Boulevard Bridge over CSX Railway Route 17, prepares structure number 1820. At this time, we have no speakers. Motion to close public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you, motion to adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you, item E6, request adoption ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a deed of easement between the City of Newport News and the Hampton Roads Temptation District, granting additional easements on city-owned property located at 100 City Farm Road. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you, consent agenda, item F contains the following items, page 95, minutes of the work session of June 10th, page 101, minutes of the regular meeting of June 10th, page 123, ordinance amending and reordaining City Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 1, Section 2, Tac 6, Bond of City Treasurer, motion to approve the consent agenda, items F1 through F3, all-inclusive.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you, next on our agenda, other city council actions, page 126, item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Item G1 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Newport News and the City of Williamsburg for bulk water purchase. Based on the master plan conducted last year for its water utility, the City of Williamsburg determined that significant capital improvements to its water treatment plant and distribution system were required. These improvements will temporarily reduce the amount of water Williamsburg can supply to its customers during construction. Because Newport News Water Works has ample water capacity and an existing connection between both systems, a new bulk water purchase agreement was developed to meet Williamsburg's interim needs. This agreement replaces the prior arrangement between the two cities. Newport News will design, build, and maintain the required infrastructure, which will be funded by the City of Williamsburg. And emergencies up to two additional million gallons per day may be requested through the existing connection. The agreement runs from July 1, 2025 to January 1, 2050, with automatic 25-year renewals, and includes a process for dispute resolution and potential termination. I recommend approval.
See, we have no speakers. Motion to adopt the resolution.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you, page 137, item G2.
Item G2 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Newport News and the City of Hampton for billing sewer and solid waste services. Under the agreement, Newport News Water Works will bill and collect Hampton sewer and solid waste fees on the same bill as water service, based on water usage and a flat weekly rate. Hampton must give 30 days' notice for any rate changes. The agreement starts July 2025 and renews annually unless terminated within 180 days of notice. I recommend approval.
At this time, I see we have no speakers. Motion to adopt the resolution.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you, page 148, item G3, Mr. Manager.
Item G3 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute the fiscal year 2026 through 2030 agreement for redevelopment services between the City of Newport News and the Newport News Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Under the agreement, the city will fund Newport News Redevelopment and Housing Authority to support redevelopment efforts in the southeast community and downtown, including property acquisition, relocation, and demolition. This new agreement, effective July 1, 2025, replaces the current one and includes four optional one-year renewals pending annual capital improvement plan funding. Newport News Redevelopment Housing Authority remains a key partner in advancing the city's long-term redevelopment goals, including the Choice Neighborhood Initiative. I recommend approval.
I see we have no speakers. Motion to adopt the resolution.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you, page 159, item G4, Mr. Manager.
Item G4 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the donation of lawn equipment to the Bethay Family Foundation. The foundation operates the Safe Haven Empowerment Center at 429 Thorncliff Drive, and the equipment will support required property maintenance under an existing license agreement with the City of Newport News. I recommend approval.
See, we have no speakers. Motion to adopt the resolution.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Uh, I'm standing due to my personal interest in the transaction, as I am an employee of the Bethay Family Foundation. My signed written declaration is on file with the city clerk.
Right, motion carry, six zero with one abstention.
Thank you, appropriations, item H, Mr. Manager.
There are two appropriations this evening. Item H1 is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $1 million in fiscal year 2024 community project funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for improvements to the seafood market and seafood industrial park dock. The funding secured through a request submitted by the city and sponsored by Congressman Bobby Scott will support harbor dredging, demolition of old piers, and installation of new commercial moorings. Project also includes construction of an ADA-compliant floating dock, a new 7,600-square-foot seafood market facility, food vendor stalls, and outdoor seating. Item H2 is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $1,600,000 from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, fiscal year 2024 Port Host Communities Revitalization Fund Grant and required local match for dock improvements at 917 Jefferson Avenue. City was awarded an $800,000 grant for the fiscal year 2024 Port Host Communities Revitalization Fund, which requires a one-to-one local match. The funding will support dredging, demolition of deteriorated piers, installation of a new, a new commercial moorings with shore power and water, and construction of an ADA-compliant floating dock for access to the future seafood market. I recommend approval of both appropriations.
Motion to approve item H1 and H2?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you, citizen comments, item I, citizen comments on matters remained to council. I will call each name in the order appears in front of me. Anderson Cuffey, then Alan Tanner, then Pastor Roberto Dial, and then Valora Portius, in that order. So Anderson Cuffey, thank you, sir.
Good evening, council members, um, my name is Anderson Cuffey. I want to take a few minutes to talk about some of the crimes that are being committed in the area. You may or may not be aware of them already, but I'm gonna, uh, take a few minutes to shine a light on them, because it's a serious problem, and based on my experience, it's on an organizational level. And I know that if it's happening to me, it's very likely it's happening to a lot more people, not just where it started for me, uh, which is the state of California, but right here in the Hampton Roads area as well, because it's all connected. And it's something that if it isn't addressed and stopped, and the ones, I mean, these crimes aren't held accountable, it's only gonna continue to affect, cause serious harm, or ruin the lives of many more people, if not worse. For me, well, the, uh, for me, it all stems from an attempt that was made on my life back in October of 2020. And it's crimes being committed with mining, I'm sure, this personal information, the problem of battered and abused women, and the victimization of men as well, and what that will lead to in being assaulted and personally violated through technology. Law enforcement's already aware of the attempt and other crimes that I'm gonna be talking about. And one of the last times I spoke with the FBI in Los Angeles regarding the issue, I was told there's certain details they can't say, yes, it's an ongoing investigation, and if they needed any additional information from me, they would have contacted me. Um, and I've been reaching out to the FBI's Norfolk Field Office as well, right here off Clearfield and Chesapeake, so they're aware of the problem, but as of yet arrests haven't been made. So until arrests are made, I continue to make people aware. But like I said, for me, it all stems from an attempt that was made on my life back in October of 2020 by Tori Roberts and others. Tori is the senior pastor of the Potter's House Church in Los Angeles. I was living in Los Angeles, California at the time, and I fled the state of California during the attempt. And while fleeing the state, I spent a short time in a couple of other states before I actually got into Virginia. Part of the proof I have regarding the attempt itself and their intent is in my phone. My phone is hacked, my phone was hacked before I fled the state of California. And Tori Roberts and others were uploading videos, threats, and other hacked messaging to my phone as I was being tracked and pursued out of the state. Um, and it wasn't just a, a, a video that was uploaded here or there either, but it was an influx of videos, threats, and other hacked messages that I continued to get that were commenting on me and my actions even after I fled the state of California. Um, there were videos uploaded to my MacBook Air, my iPhone 6S, I still have my phone in my possession. And one of the things that was said, one stage, one camera, inside the Potter's House Church in Los Angeles by Roosevelt Stewart, he's another pastor at the Potter's House Church in Los Angeles, and it was said not long before I, um, actually fled the state of California, was that you're gonna need a different name, a different face, and that you'll bring down the whole organization. Uh, and after getting to Virginia, I continued to receive threats and other hacked messaging to my phone, one of which was a threat that I received just a few days after arriving to Virginia. It was a threat that was, uh, sent through the drop box of a news notification, It was a threat that was sent through the drop box of a news notification where at the end of it, it read, "If you get all this talk of conspiracy, in fact, it could get you killed." And from that time, I've been aware that there are people who are aware of me and my actions on a day-to-day basis and on a level that I can't prove that have been causing problems and conveniences and committing crimes against me and others who as of yet not been held accountable. From that time, I've had emails hacked and was locked out. I've had pictures, contacts, and other information that's been taken out of my phone. And it's up for one day. I haven't been able to call out or receive calls on my phone since late February of twenty twenty-four. I'm sorry. The rest of what I wanted to say is put it up for you guys.
If you just give it to the city clerk, she'll take care of it, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Tanner.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name's Alan Tanner. I'm very excited tonight to be in front of you to introduce two, two people that I have a lot of respect for and are going to have a real impact on our downtown area. As you recall from the work session you saw earlier today, the quality of life downtown is perceived not as well as it should be. And one of our missions down here is to provide a home base for the men and women, men and women on board those ships that are docked out here. Their quality of life is most important. At a time like this, it's even more important. Can you only imagine living on board one of those ships on a day like this in the City of Newport News and having to face going to war? It can happen at any time to those young men and women. And what's happening recently, and I'm very, very excited about it, is two people that are going to be here before you tonight are going to talk about their vision for bringing that quality of life to our downtown area. The first speaker will be Pastor Roberto Dial, who will give you his vision, and it surrounds the, the St. Paul's Church, one of our most historic churches in the entire state, along with many of the other churches, the five churches that are here in downtown Newport News. And the second person you'll hear from is Valori Portius. She is the manager of the one and only seven eleven that serves gas here in downtown Newport News. And their experiences are broad-based, but I want the council to hear their vision, and hopefully the city and council and, and, and citizens and the men and women aboard the ships will get behind their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm honored to be here tonight. I'm here tonight because of a relationship. First, as a pastor, my relationship with my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. After that, my relationship with Alan, who just got up and spoke before you. Through God's intervention, divine intervention, we got together and we ventured a contract on the St. Paul Church at two twenty-one thirty-fourth Street. With that being said, my vision, I'm currently the pastor of the Family of Believers Worship Center, and I've been pastoring that church for over three years. But now it's time to get involved downtown Newport News. As Alan mentioned, there's some, a huge need, there's a huge need down here to bring families together. There are men and women on those ships that don't have family here. I'm old school. We used to have watch care ministry at the churches that I came up in for college students, military, and other workers. So I'm looking forward to serving this community. I've been in the City of Newport News serving this community for over twenty years in a business capacity. So now I'm looking to continue that mission in a spiritual capacity. But thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Valora Portius.
Hello. My name is Valori Portius, and I'm working with Alan on the property in two twenty-one thirty-fourth Street. And being a military spouse and from Fort Eustis, we used to have to host soldiers who weren't going home holidays. Not everybody can fly home, you know, things like that. So the church does have a huge assembly hall attached to it. So what I'm planning on doing with that assembly hall is opening it up for like holiday, Thanksgiving, Christmas, Easter dinners, having school drives for backpacks, things like that. And we will have entertainment there in forms of like arcade-type games, things like that, maybe some live music every so often. And we will have it open until about eight o'clock at night, so it's not a nuisance in the area because being from seven eleven, I do know when it gets dark, strange people come out. So we're only going to have it open till eight, and that will give the Navy people, when they get done work, it'll give them something to do just for a little while because they have no transportation. A lot of them just get some ramen noodles and go back to their rooms. So my vision is to get that assembly area opened up and have some sort of entertainment for the young soldiers, the young sailors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, our next item will be new business. City Manager.
I would certainly like to wish everyone on council and those who are in the audience and also listening and watching tonight, a very happy and safe Fourth of July. And I'd like to encourage you to join us in a Fourth of July celebration at Victory Landing Park on Friday, July fourth, from six to nine fifteen. This will be a fun, family-friendly, patriotic celebration. More importantly, with a fifteen-minute fireworks display. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. City Attorney.
Nothing, sir.
City Clerk.
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Vic.
Yes, I, I want to just thank everyone for coming, but also talk about our Juneteenth celebration that we actually had at Victory Landing Park. I want to thank the Parks and Recreation Department and of course, our Councilman John Ely for his creative ideas that brought so much energy and entertainment to Newport News. And the crowd was enormous. And so I want to, and I certainly have to say this, I want to thank our police officers, Chief Drew, and all of the police officers for keeping us safe. And what I have to say, as I told Councilman Ely, what I noticed out there at the celebration, the officers were very friendly to all of the patrons and were helping them to get in the right direction, whether it was the VIP or, you know, other seating or, or to just enjoy. And I think that made a big difference in the reactions of people and to keep everything calm and friendly. So thank you, and our fire chief. Thank you, Phil. Let me just send me fire department. And our fire chief Wesley, I want to thank you because you all make a great team, and it really showed. It really showed on, on the, for the Juneteenth celebration. And not to even miss my, the thing that I love the most, the police escort that you all gave me to the actual festival. Thank you for that.
We like that.
Thank you for that. Correct. And so I too want to, want everybody to have a safe and happy Independence Day and enjoy the celebration with us here in Newport News. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to first wish my condolences to Councilwoman Tina Vic on the passing of your sister. She was one of the finest ladies I've known. Go over, go over there sometime with Tina, and she just keep you laughing the whole time. So my condolences to Tina and to the Vic family. I also would like to thank everyone who came out to the Juneteenth celebration. It took a lot of hard work. Special thanks out to Parks and Recreation. They worked around the clock. I felt like I was a staff member at times, but they worked nine a day to pull that event off. Special thanks to Shelley and Najma with Parks and Recreation. They meant that they was going to give all to that event, and they gave it all. And special thanks to Lisa. I know Lisa's like, okay, y'all calling me again, but she made sure everything was possible and made sure that we had what we needed financially to make the, pull the event off. Also, special thanks to the city manager. Special thanks to Ginger and Bo. Best team ever, they rock. Alan Archer, he kind of just set up high and oversee, but those, Ginger and Bo was on the ground. Especially Bo. Bo was looking like, shut it off. But they worked very good with our first responders, Chief Drew and Chief Wesley. A lot of stuff I didn't agree with at the beginning, but once it all came together, I said, okay, y'all right, it made sense. So that's what makes a good team, where you're able to listen to your team and know what they're doing is making the right decision for Newport News. And last but not least, our CSR's. All of our CSR's were rocked that day. They were, can't describe the amount of work they put in night and day, making sure the event was a success. And to the city council, it was a lot of work, a lot of hard work, but I love my Parks and Recreation community, and thank y'all for putting me up there. It gives me a lot to do, so to y'all, thank y'all for putting me on that committee. And it was amazing to work with y'all, and I hope y'all enjoyed the festival. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Harris.
I just want to express my condolences to the Vic family as well and praying for you and your family as you go through this time of bereavement. So just wanted to share that with you. And that's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Long.
I also too want to share my condolences to you, Councilwoman Vic, and the Vic family. Prayers and thoughts with you as you go through this time. Councilwoman Vic said it all about the Juneteenth Festival. Thanks to Parks and Rec, the first responders, Councilman Ely. I didn't realize there's so many other people behind the scenes until John explained all those pieces, pieces and parts. So really do appreciate all the hard work that you put into the Juneteenth Festival. And it really shows us that we have the capability of doing something that large and to that scale. So I think it's more, hopefully, there's more to come on of festivals here in the community. And lastly, just wishing everyone a happy Fourth and safe. If you're staying here, please come to Victory Arc. If you're going somewhere else, safe travels. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly reiterate what everyone had said. Juneteenth this past Saturday was incredible. Definitely team effort, I mean, from Parks and Rec all the way down to our CSR's that were out there working hard and, but thank you so much. Looking forward to doing this again next year. And just overall, great job. Also would like to congratulate our recent graduates from Newport News Police Department and also from the Fire Department. I want to welcome them to the team. I want to thank them for their hard work and dedication to getting through the academy. And now the hard work starts, really. And now they're out in our community, serving our citizens and, but we appreciate that they've chosen Newport News to start their public service, so thank you. Also, want to wish the best of luck to the new recruits that are starting the Fire Academy. I think they started last week, and I know personally, they're super excited about it, and they're very happy to be part of the team Newport News. So I want to say welcome and best of luck to them. Also want to say, got to attend the, the city-sponsored Pride Event that happened last week, and I believe that was through Human Resources, correct?
Yes.
Fantastic event. It was in City Center. Really appreciated that. I think the staff appreciated it as well. So thank you so much for hosting that. And then also my condolences to Tina and her family. Yeah, I met your sister a couple times. Lovely lady, and so sorry for your loss and to your family. And also want to wish everyone a happy Fourth. Hope everything, hope everyone goes out and enjoys the, the celebrations here in the city. Not only do we have fireworks, but we have two parades in Hilton Village. We have one on Main Street, and then we also have one in Brandon Heights. And there's going to be other festivities that are going to be going on throughout the city, so please take advantage. Also would like to recognize our Commonwealth's Attorney-elect, Shannon Jones. She is here tonight as well. So welcome and congratulations. And last but not least, I want to wish a very special person in my life a very happy birthday. She is celebrating her twenty-ninth birthday tomorrow. That's just a joke.
I knew exactly who you were just saying.